All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April one, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Orange Town Plan and Zoning Commission. I am Commissioner Ozzy Parenti, and with us this evening.
Tom Turente.
Paul Kaplan.
Jenny Bezos, our recording secretary. That's okay. Go ahead.
Bonnie Shai, court reporter.
Kevin Cornell.
Still?
Still.
Judy Smith.
Jack DeMergen, zoning administrator.
Okay, thank you very much. First item on our agenda tonight is a review of the minutes from the March eighteen, two thousand and twenty-five meeting. Neither Kevin nor I were in attendance for that, so.
The meeting was extremely well run.
That's what I hear. I heard it from Judy.
And very telegenic, by the way.
Yeah, it was much better.
As much as they keep us out, it's better, right? All right, so anybody have comments on the, on the minutes?
Last line of page one.
Okay.
Jenny? Excuse me, Bull Hill Road should be Bull Hill Lane.
Oh, oh, yes, Bull Hill Lane, yes, got it.
And on the third paragraph of page two, and Judy and Kevin, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that end of that third into the fourth line, I think you want to strike out the absence of and add in eliminating the fire lane striping. Isn't that what you're?
Yeah, well, he wasn't here.
No, but he was.
No, the meeting before.
Right, referring to, right.
Okay, so that third paragraph, so which?
I think I've got it here.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I know.
You got it? Okay.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
I had just a couple little things, even though I wasn't here, but just under reported the zoning enforcement officer. Second line, toward the end of the line, input of should be, I think, input on. And then, at the end of that paragraph, BFJ Planning is looking to have any revisions to their submitted chapters by this week from the Planning and Zoning Commission members. I think that's what it refers to, input from, from the commission. Anything else? A motion to approve the minutes? Anybody?
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a motion to approve the minutes. We have a second. All those in favor? And I abstain, and Kevin abstains. Okay. Very good. Anything to talk about under old business? How about new business? Okay, then item number four on our agenda is a report of the zoning enforcement officer.
I'm just going to remind everybody about our workshop tomorrow. We have that to look forward to. BFJ is going to be here around four o'clock setting up, so very early, but if we want to get by. High Plains, yes, I'm sorry, not, not here, High Plains Community Center.
What time is it?
Sorry, Chris isn't here to yell at me. Seven o'clock at the High Plains Community Center. I, me and Jenny will be here by six, be there by six thirty, so if anybody, you know, wants to show up early, chat with BFJ, you're more than welcome. And then, other than that, the only thing I'll mention is our elderly conversion recertification. We have gotten everybody either confirmed not recertifying the permit or certifying the permit other than one person, so we actually did very well on that.
Out that one person.
We, we, we won't yet. We'll give them another, we'll give them another week. But, but yes, that, that did end up going very well, so we will do that regularly in the future. Other than that?
All right, that sounds good. Anything, any questions for Jack, or? Okay, then we'll move right into our continuation of our public hearings tonight. We have two of them. First one is an application, is the application for special exception perimeter use and site plan application that's submitted by DTB Orange LLC. This is for one twelve Boston Post Road. And the plan, the proposed plan is to remove the existing former subway building and to construct a two-lane drive-through service coffee stand with car hop service. And this has been continued from, I think we initially opened the public hearing, or we, we did open the public hearing on March fourth, right?
Correct.
So this is continued, for some reason, I was thinking we opened the, the meeting before that, but.
Mm-mm.
All right, so continued from our last meeting, or from our first meeting in, in March. Oh, yeah, that's what I meant, March, we, we opened it in March fourth, and then two weeks thereafter, we had a second hearing on it. All right, so let's start with the applicant. Just, in case you have anything further to add at this point, I know, I know we didn't get to a
Thank you very much.
We didn't get to a decision.
Yeah, he's been here before.
Just to start with, good evening, Marcus Puttoc, P-U-T-T-O-C-K.
Thank you.
No problem. Representing the applicant, civil engineer with an address at twenty-six Broadway in North Haven. I think, since there was two of you that weren't here at the last meeting, I will quickly recap some of what we spoke about, and then I have one additional point that I wanted to make, and then I guess I'll rest my case. At the last meeting, we spoke about, we have received comments from DOT about the driveways. We've expanded the width of the eggs, the driveway onto Bull Hill Lane, so we, we've added a, a small island in the middle. The DOT requested to discourage folks from making a left in or making a left out.
Discourage, but not.
There's no way we can stop. We, we do the best we can to discourage them from making those, those movements with an island, but obviously.
You're talking about turns into the property.
So a left turn into the property, yes, so we, we've created an island that, that makes that movement just that much more difficult. Obviously, people will break the law and do things the wrong way. There's nothing we can, I, I can't say that I can guarantee people won't do that, but we're, we're doing the best we can to discourage it. Likewise, we'll have signage and, and an island that directs folks to only turn right out of that driveway.
And?
That's the, that's the best we can.
And you discourage traffic coming from, oh, no, you, traffic on Bull Hill Lane?
Heading, heading north, I'll say, towards Boston Post Road on Bull Hill Lane. We, we don't want them turning left in, but folks heading towards West Haven can certainly turn right into the place, so this, it comes a right in, right out.
Okay.
Which is what DOT requested. They requested, we widened this just a, just a little bit to get a full eleven-foot lane for, for turning each direction out of our, our driveway onto the Boston Post Road.
Tell me, what, what would be the usual traffic pattern for someone entering?
You mean from the Post Road?
From the Post Road.
They, they can pull down and into the, for the lack of a better word, suicide lane and turn left in, or.
Well, that gets common.
They are, yeah, say, you know, they're all over the Post Road and, and they, they actually function reasonably well in this location, the.
But once you're on the property, though, what would be the traffic? What would be the expected?
From the Post Road, we would come in, come through either one of the two lanes across the front, around the side of the building and, and through our lanes. If, if that's somewhat backed up, they could go around the back and, and, and come into these lanes. We're, we're certainly no longer directing them to do so, but we won't discourage it either. If they come in from Bull Hill Lane, they've made a, a left at the light because it's easier and, and bring the right in, that they, they can make this turn, we verified that for DOT, get into a lane and, and get a coffee, and then work their way back out, depending on which direction they are going. If they're headed towards West Haven on Bull Hill Lane, the easiest way is to leave that side. If they are going anywhere else, then the easiest exit is, is, is to come across the front of the building and, and leave.
So, I forgot your first name, I'm sorry.
My first name is Marcus.
Appreciate it. Would have been helpful for you. So, Marcus, when you come in from the Post Road, you're making an immediate left into the parking lot, or do you go toward the, toward the buildings, so to speak, and make the left?
They could do either. They're both, they're both two-way traffic, so.
Yes.
So, I mean, cars do that now for all of the parking across the front, so.
Let me ask you this, would it be correct to say that you expect that most people coming to the site will come there off of, or go in off of Bull Hill Lane?
I didn't do a traffic study.
Well, if I'm driving on the Post Road.
Yep.
Rather than.
It's an easy right into the, I mean, if you come in, if you come in west toward the Post Road.
I mean, if, if I'm coming toward Milford from West Haven, I'm going to turn at the light.
Yes.
I'm not going to make that left turn.
Across traffic, I agree.
Across traffic.
You'd like to think people would, you know, if somebody doesn't realize that, they're going to try to use the suicide lane and get into the lot.
So, so traffic coming from West Haven toward Milford is going to probably turn a left.
But there's, you know, there's much more traffic coming the other way, right? Coming from Milford.
Toward West Haven.
I think so. I don't know. Well, listen, I have no idea.
But that's an easy turn into the site, because it's a right turn.
It's an easy turn, yeah. Right.
Right, and, and, and if you're.
And it's going to be easy turn off of.
Easy right off of Bull Hill Lane.
That, that part's the easy part, the harder part is.
Rather than make that suicide turn.
Well, it depends where they're coming from.
Yeah, and, and whether they think of it in time, although there's so many factors that.
Whether they've been there before. Basically, the existing traffic pattern for the existing center is going to be made somewhat easier and safer by widening the existing entrances on the Post Road for all tenants of that shopping center.
Yeah.
And on Bull Hill.
And turning on Bull Hill Lane into a right in, right out.
Yeah.
So it's basically an upgrade for the center.
Right.
Yeah.
And with respect to their parcel, their, their business model is counting on repeat customers who will know where they're coming from and how they're going to get there the next time.
Yeah.
So.
It's, listen, it's a, it's a big upgrade for the, the center, it's a little upgrade for the traffic pattern.
Yes.
Doesn't make it any worse.
And right. And as far as the, the queuing, the concern about queuing back to Bull Hill Lane.
Well, the, the analysis from the original presentation was that the two lanes of stacking on the site of the coffee shop exceed the projected traffic pattern at their peak times.
And if that's not the case, people aren't going to want to get hung up on.
They'll go to Dunkin' Donuts.
Right.
Yeah, they'll go somewhere else.
So I, you know, I, I guess that sort of solves that problem. Okay.
And we have confidence that we will be able to accommodate the cars as they come in, get them in, get them out, and get them on their way safely and quickly
Okay.
with the drink that they enjoy.
All right.
The, the other item that queen, that we discussed at the last meeting was the, the LED lighting around the roof, and and that is a, a very standard part of the building, and, and while we recognize that it's, it's not permitted within your regulations because of, and I'm going to hand out sort of my response to this, they, they do have a few of the three hundred and forty of, of these locations, or three hundred and forty plus, I think there are about ten that do not have the visible direct LED light, and what they've done is, is they essentially hide it up under a a piece of flashing that allows it to project just straight down, so you can't see the light directly unless you're standing underneath the canopy, but it just creates that, that little bit of downlighting around the building.
Jack, would that comply? Sorry, Marcus.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that would. Our sign regs say the direct source of LED lighting.
So if they put that little facade or whatever it's called, a fascia, yeah, it's better.
Yeah.
I like that.
And it is not illuminated?
It's, it, so the lights, the lights behind it, so it's, it's essentially.
Do you have a rendering of what that looks like?
It, they're in the, in the packet, you can see, I do not have one where it's like at night where you can see it lit up, but it, it does show what those look like. And I would ask.
So, and for the record, I watched the, I was out for the last meeting, but I did watch the very efficient meeting that was much more telegenic by the lack of certain participants.
Yeah, don't be speaking for yourself.
He didn't watch the meeting.
But, so. So, I went by the Wallingford store of your product, once on a rainy night and once on a clear night. And the problem, the problem I have there is that the, the glow and color were very distracting. Now, there, you're mid-block, and you can sort of, like, not pay attention, so to speak.
Sure.
When you're at a corner, I, 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 I'm a lot more concerned about being distracted.
Did they have the fascia of?
They had that, that's where that was taken.
That's the photo I took the first night while it was raining, and so it's a little prejudicial because in the, the, the wet surfaces enhance the glow and paints it in its worst light.
But then, this one doesn't have the.
Doesn't have the shielding that he's proposing here.
But I don't, I don't, I don't know that, and it's a color issue also, okay, it's, it's very, it stands out very dramatically, that the, the halo of that purple, I'm sorry, I don't know what color would you call it?
It's like a blue.
That's fair.
Blue, yeah, blue, it was, but it was, it was very, I, I'm very concerned that on the sides fronting Bull Hill Lane, I'm most concerned about the sides fronting Bull Hill Lane and the Post Road, okay?
Fair.
You know, you're gonna have legal signage addressing the public on both those elevations.
Yeah.
Anyway. It, it just, you know, it just seems to be a very busy intersection.
Yeah, and I would be nervous if we opened the door one bit and wind up with a boatload of these on Route One with this illumination.
Are you concerned, probably concerned about both, but more concerned about the safety issue?
Anesthetic.
Or aesthetic, you know, it's not quintessent, quintessential New England.
That, that doesn't, I mean, personally, I'm more concerned from a, from a driver distraction. There's a reason why billboards on highways have to be a certain distance away, and they, they can only do so much, and it was really a big change when they started allowing those LED signs that roll over. That was a
Sure.
a big change for DOT, or I guess that was a fence. And I, I, I just, so, so it, I have a, it more as a safety concern on those two elevations. If you wanted to have, because to me, there's a difference between under canopy lighting for the purposes of your car's wayfinding around your building.
Sure.
And what, in that case, at Wallingford, is clearly just an extension of the branding of the building.
It is.
So somewhere.
Which is why, which is why I said, we're not proposing that one here, because we've recognized that, that, the way that that one is set up in Wallingford just isn't allowed in your regulations, and but I would make the argument that covering it and having it pointing down rather than out eliminates that distraction, eliminates the point source, the visible point source light, and so that I think doing it that way allows us to still get some of our branding for our building that we, that we want and, and comply with your regulations at the same time.
And while, and respecting your opinion, what if we find out that you're wrong? Building's up, and it's, like, even shielded is a garish carnival on a corner that is, you know, distracting to people as they're trying to go by.
Do we have, I'm sorry, are you done?
Yeah.
Do we have buildings along the lines of what Marcus is proposing here, where there's LEDs, but they're shielded?
I mean, I'm trying to think about it.
There's lots of buildings with downlights that light up the entire facade. Lots.
But it may not, it may not be neon light.
Right, it's the color, I, you know.
Yeah, I can't say I, off the top of my head, I can think of an existing building in orange that has something similar to what they're proposing, as we have a lot of downlighting.
It, it's really coloration and because they still have to comply to the lumens at the property line.
Right, so it's not the intensity.
Okay, so.
It's the color.
Like, the color is what.
Do we prohibit LED accents, is that correct?
Right.
So how can we then go ahead and allow an LED flex light?
So, what the language says, and I think what Marcus, Marcus's proposal is kind of outlining, LED signs, neon, neon lighting, accents and signs, where the source of light is visible, are prohibited. So I think that's kind of the purpose of them introducing the shield. Still, I, I see, completely understand where you're going with the color.
With the concept being that the source
Is invisible.
is shielded.
Right, you're not getting the direct source of light.
So getting a softer halo.
You're not seeing where the blue light comes from, you're just seeing.
By regulations.
Exactly, right. I think for the purposes of the, of the regulation, I think his proposal does, you know, solve the language, but the color and intensity, obviously, that's for the board to determine.
Do we have that discretion for the
Absolutely.
intensity?
You could, you know, always have a condition that this, you know, light bar, shielded or unshielded, not, not be included in the approval, if the board were going that direction.
You know, and I'm not trying to be like Simsberry trying to change the color of McDonald's logo, okay? The question, that, that, and I'm trying to think in my mind if what was distracting was that it was such a bright blue, defined blue light, because it was unshielded versus the color.
You'd have to, you'd have to see.
And I don't know.
Right.
I just offhand don't know.
Yeah. You'd have to see how that looked on the, kind of those conditions, as to whether or not it was as distracting as, as the direct source.
So, we don't have any renderings of your proposal and the ten stores that have them?
I do not.
Okay, so we don't know what that's going to look like at night?
I, I don't have a picture of.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't exist.
There, there are, there are a few stores that have that condition, but I do not have a photo of them at night.
Could we ask them to, to, I, I mean, he can send it directly to Jack, but can we ask the applicant to send a picture of one of those stores?
We, I mean, we could, not if we're planning on closing the hearing tonight.
Oh, that would have to be.
You'd have to get an extension.
We would have to keep, keep this whole thing open.
It doesn't, it just, it's, it, it seems unlikely.
Of course.
Unlikely that that would distract drivers.
If it's shielded, it, there's a less, obviously, a lot less likelihood.
But to Judy's point, though, I mean, we don't really allow neon signs anywhere, I mean, we're, we're pretty consistent on that, pretty, pretty careful about it, right?
But it, it wouldn't be, it's essentially becomes just a downlight.
You're not going to see this. You're not going to read the line, you're going to read a
A glow.
a glow against the building.
Jack, could you read that?
Sure.
Relevant part?
Light motion. No flashing, revolving, or moving signs are permitted. LED signs, neon lighting, accents, and signs where the source of light is visible are prohibited. All lighting of signs shall be indirect with all sources of artificial illumination located out of doors, including spotlights and floodlights, shielded or otherwise arranged, that such sources are not visible from any street or other lot.
Well, that, the last part of that is not relevant.
Right.
But the first part, the fir, you can read the first part again.
LED signs, neon lighting, accents, and signs where the, oh, sorry, sorry, where the source of light is visible are prohibited.
So that means you say it's not prohibited where the source of the light is not visible?
This proposed change, yeah, this proposed change, I think, makes them compliant with this, with this section.
Okay.
I, I brought it up because I didn't want to surprise anyone with, with it later and have it have you feel cheated or, or upset about, you know, the lack of transparency, so to be transparent, this, we believe that those lights that are shielded would comply with the regulation and, and, and would satisfy.
Color down light.
Our.
Where, where the source is not visible.
Right.
Unless you're standing under it looking.
But are LED lights, do they throw a different light than a regular light?
I don't, I don't know.
All the parking lot lights are LED.
Everything's LED now, just about.
So it's really.
If it, if it's not, it will be soon. There's just so much to do.
I'm sorry, just want to make sure I understand your cross-section.
Sure.
So I think what we're saying is, is that there is a very small trough with a fascia on it, so that the light is forced down to wash that first flat surface
Yes.
of the
Yes.
of, of the rest of the soffit. Right. And so, in order to, the only observational point to see that LED, you would have to physically be on the ground, looking straight up.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, otherwise, depending on the intensity of those LEDs, you're washing that, just that twelve-ish inch.
Of, of the, yeah, of the fascia, of the soffit, yeah.
And it's blue.
The soffit's blue, yes.
I think, I think my experience of Wallingford was the very direct, very sharp line. You know, it, you know, just, and.
Which, which I would take exception to aesthetically.
Okay.
Anyway, if, if that were the.
But, but as a wash, I, I don't, you know, blue versus white, because.
Even if it was white, it's going to appear blue.
Yeah, they, they can put in any number of downlights in the drive-through canopy.
And when it's raining, it, there'll be a halo with the white or the.
Blue, yeah.
And, and to Judy's point about future applications.
Yeah.
You know, we, we always.
It's a special permit.
This applicant comply, applicant complied, I mean, and, and, you know.
Have to shield the source of the light.
Yeah, another applicant could do the same thing, which is fine. It would be in compliance with our regulations.
But after the fact, if we go and we go, you know what, that wasn't enough shielding, then we would have to revise the regulation to address it more directly.
The regulation is pretty clear.
Yeah, but what you'd said, if that's the way it's going to lay out, and you have to be able to be underneath it from the ground to be able to see the source of light.
Well, that's why I was hoping that we would have had a rendering.
Yeah.
They have the, the places, they have ten other places, it gets nighttime every night, what would it have taken? Just submit something.
They're, they're not around here, to be fair, so. They're, they're, they're not around here, to be fair, so, you know, getting a photo of a place, wherever they may be, I don't even know what those locations are.
Can't ask the person that runs it to take a thing and email it, I don't know.
We could've, I, we did not.
Okay.
That's all.
That's all you have?
Yeah, that's all I had. Um, I think all of the questions were addressed the last meeting, um, other than that, and.
Let, let me ask this, I may have missed, I may have missed this last week, or last meeting. What, what happens, if anything, to those dumpsters that line the back of the other building on the property? There, there are like four, four or five?
We, we, we painted out a, a loading zone area with no parking on it, that they will hopefully keep those dumpsters within, um, but we have no control, our application has no control over those, those dumpsters, and, and where they're located or how they are located.
But it obviously affects two-way traffic on the property.
Two-way traffic in the back.
You can't do it behind the building.
Between the dumpsters and the parked cars.
Right, and that, so that's not
And I had asked that last time, could they relocate all the dumpsters on one side of the building, but
And the answer was no.
No.
And we, we aren't directing anyone against the grain. The, 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 the traffic pattern is, is to come towards Bull Hill Lane across the back of the building. Nothing directs cars in the opposite direction.
There would be no reason for cars to go in the opposite direction?
There would be no reason to, no.
So, right, because you, you, you go through the building, get your coffee, and you would proceed to your left, and
But you're, you're exiting here, so you're either gonna come back out and go, or you're gonna come to the front.
So it'd be unlikely that, that, that there would be traffic moving out of the property, going behind the building?
Correct.
Coming in will be a different story, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess, I
I, I spent enough time cutting through, through there, that I will bet you, everybody who comes east on the Post Road will go in that existing driveway, on the Post Road, down the right side of the building, take a left behind it, and go to the queue.
Say that again, Tom, I'm sorry.
And, and if they do do that, that sees the direction that that traffic needs to travel.
That's what's gonna happen.
Yeah.
You don't think that they'll, they'll turn toward the
Left across the front of the building?
Yeah.
And take, no. I, I cut through there three times a week.
But there, they have a non-coinciding traffic peak with the rest of the center.
Yeah.
So it may be inviting during the morning, before those other shops are really open.
It's just, it's an awkward route, though, Kevin. If you drive across the front.
The whole center's awkward.
Right.
But they didn't
But it's particularly awkward if you take a left, go across the front of the center, take a right down the left side of the building, and then try to you into that, uh, drive-through. It's brutal.
They'll find the easiest way.
Yep.
You, and, and, uh, the, uh, we're, we're comfortable with the landscaping proposal, and the applicant's comfortable with irrigation, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, circle back to lights for a second. The shielding, I can see how this works on the lower part of the canopy. You're also gonna do it on the curve portion up above?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you, you treat it the same way, wouldn't you, if, again, as long as you can't see the source?
Yeah, it's just
Probably illuminate the whole dome, the whole bump up.
It's, it's just, uh, it, I mean, from a construction standpoint, it's a little harder to do the curve, and that's also a lot higher, so your ability, you'd wanna drop the fascia a little more, because the higher it goes, the easier it is to look past the fascia.
Well, they're obliga-, I mean, at that point, it's an enforcement issue, they, they have an obligation for, for the public not to be able to see the source of light.
And that's what the regulations say.
Yeah, you, you might wanna think on the higher elevation to make the fascia a little deeper. You know, it, it, so we, we don't wanna be talking after this is done.
Mm-hmm. Understood.
Can, I had one thing that I, when I took another look at this today, you say that there are six, hundred, hundred and sixty-four parking spaces required and one sixty-four provided, but they're not shown on the plan.
That's true, we didn't show them.
Can you show them on the, I think we ordinarily have parking spaces
That's true.
shown, we don't just
Aren't they on his existing condition plan?
We don't have the entire center shown on any of the plans, so we, we didn't show all of those spaces, the
But the parking, I think, ought to be there.
Is it changing at all?
The parking?
Yeah.
We don't know, we don't have it on the plan.
Well, they're, they're proposing their own parking, but because it's one property as a whole, they, you know, they have a new calculation with a new user coming in.
Right.
So they're saying that they, they're a hundred and sixty-four, they're providing a hundred and sixty-four.
Then it should be on the plan.
We just wanna see, there are a hundred and sixty-four, right?
I'm thinking that the next tenning maybe takes the whole building, the, the other building on the property. Is there gonna be, you know, can, and, and they calculate that the requirement would be one sixty-four, but do they actually exist? Can you draw them on the plan?
I, I, I certainly can, and if you wanted to make that a condition of approval, that I provide that to Jack, I, I certainly could do that.
Anything else? Any other questions for the applicant? No? Do you have anything to add?
I do not.
You rest.
Unless somebody in the public has a comment that I need to rebut or anything, but I think I'm good.
Is there, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to, uh, speak to this application, either in favor or against?
We, we just, you gotta come up here.
Yeah, sorry.
Just your name and address for the record, please.
Catherine Williams, 515 Dogwood Road in Orange. I just had one question, you were talking about the landscaping was approved, and I was just wondering what, um, if that landscaping is going to be with native plants or not.
You wanna address that?
Sure.
The, the landscaping, the landscaping plan's not approved, it's approved with, with everything else.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I
The proposed.
But the proposed, the proposed plan.
Yeah, we gotta get you back on the mic.
Thank you.
The majority of the landscaping actually is, is existing, um, so the trees along, along our frontage are existing, I'm not sure on the species of them, to be honest, and then there are some that are in the DOT right of way along Bull Hill Lane, so the, the, the primary landscaping that we're proposing is this small area in front of the building, um, and the small landscape beds next to the parking lot, and that's made up of some boxwoods, some decorative grasses, and some lilies, so.
So you were asking about trees or landscaping in general?
I was just asking if it was native, that's all.
Gen-, generally, they are native, yes.
Actually, maybe not, based on what you said. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So any, anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on the application? Okay. Jack, we, we have, uh, the fire marshals sign off.
Yes, sir.
Right. Judy, there was some change to what he had originally?
There, there was no change. I think at the first meeting, there was some discussion about getting rid of a fire lane.
Well, getting rid of the striping.
The striping for the fire lane.
But he doesn't want?
He would like it to remain.
He advised that it remain.
And it's on the plan, it's
Correct.
Exactly, it was, yep.
All right.
Correct, all the department heads have reviewed and signed off.
Okay. Well, is there anything, uh, else we think we need from outside the commission to help us decide the matter?
I mean, the, the only issue from tonight's, uh, hearing would be nice to have seen a picture on some other, of the shielded lights, but, I mean, that's, it is what it is, it complies with our zoning if they do it the way they're supposed to.
If it doesn't, as you point out, it's an enforcement issue, issue, I mean, if, if, if the source of the light is visible, then we can complain about it and get compliance. Okay. All right, so if, if there's nothing else we need, I, I would think we'd be prepared at this point to close the public hearing. Someone prepared to make a motion to
Some moved. Seconded.
It's been seconded, okay, we have a motion to, uh, close the public hearing, it's been seconded, all in favor. Aye, okay, not opposed. All right. Well, you wanna start us off, Judy?
Nope.
I'll start us off, yes. We have kinda gone round and round on this whole application, and the bottom line for me is, it's actually a pretty big site, the circulation's not apt to be great, but there's enough room that I think it'll be manageable. That's kinda where I come down on it.
You don't see a big, uh, safety issue?
No. More than it is now?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and it's certainly a big upgrade.
And it probably is, it probably is, uh, more confined time-wise, you know, the crowd
Fair enough.
You know, maybe, you know, to just the morning as opposed to all day long, I don't know.
Well, we, we don't know.
Yeah, right. Well, we don't have any reason to believe that that's a problem, but we, we do have a, you know, a traffic report in, in evidence, so.
Yeah, and I think it's an upgrade for that, for that, uh, center. The, the traffic is what it is, it's not getting any worse. I think they, Marcus was describing that they, you know, DOT asked for a couple of changes, they made them. I think it's, you know, I think that it's a difficult center, you know, no matter what we do.
And I think those DOT's suggestions and the applicants changing the plans is, uh, definitely a net positive upgrade to the traffic flow, and
Forcing them to the, as you come out, and the harder to get into the, from Bull Hill Lane.
Well, and I, I appreciate the applicant's honesty when he said that he's discouraging people, because
Yeah, well, you can't keep, you can't, you can't force people to do things, but, uh,
I, I think, you know, when you, when you think of other channelized write-in, write-outs that are supposed to exist, like, say Home Depot, you know.
You've been seeing me go the other way?
Yeah, oddly, yes. I
That's hard to do. That island is cut pretty severely. You gotta want it.
That's really hard to do, you mean, turn right onto, take a left?
You take a left, wow. How many times have you walked?
What time I gotta call Chief Gagney?
I mean, I came in to the hearing with severe concerns about the, uh, accent lighting, but I, I believe that if the applicant is willing to accept as a condition of approval that the depth of the fascia that shields the LED strip will be adjusted to, uh, conform to the regulation requirement of shielding it from eyesight at a, uh, where we're concerned. And what you're really concerned with is car height
Right.
at the road. That's the angle that we should be shielded with, because if someone's walking into the store, walking, we don't care.
Yeah, but, but they already, they already agreed that, basically, what, what we want is, uh, someone to be able to see that light only if they're standing under the light looking.
Right, but I think that, in fairness, you know.
Yeah, it's not gonna, it's not gonna, right, I, I
If, you know.
It's not gonna extend to the street. The light won't extend to the street.
No, but the, the, the height, giving, giving them something to shoot for them turns with the angle, cuts down the number of times you're disappointed after the fact, so if, if you know
You were pretty clear.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I get, I think I understand what we're, what we're after there.
So I think the traffic improvements are better. I personally would like to not have the ground striping in front of the store. I think it's more important not to confuse people who are trying to circulate than discourage people who, if they're gonna stop there, are stopping in the striping anyway. You know what I mean? I mean, but if other people disagree
As in the fire marshal.
The fire marshal.
Oh, the fire marshal wants it.
He said he wants the striping.
I'd hate to tell him, though.
Yeah.
And then have a bad fire there.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think his point was sort of if somebody's parked in a striped lane, if they understand what a fire truck coming in hot is, and they know to move, he's okay with people, you know. People stay in your car and stay in a fire lane, that, that can happen, but when you, if you have to move, you move, you don't park there.
Right.
But you can drive through it, which is, I think, the intent.
It's done all the time at Costco, and fro-, everywhere, you know, people pull up
Yeah, drive-through.
Right.
No, definitely the, the DOT, uh, recommendations will improve the site. Um, you know, I wish we did have a rendering. I, I don't, I wanna get it right at the beginning, not after the fact. Now it's an enforcement issue, that's a little bit of a concern for me. Um, I'm trying to think if there are other buildings that are illuminated all the way around, even with cutoffs, you know, in town.
Probably.
A band around a building?
Probably a lot.
I mean, there's something I have noticed in recent, like, you know, last year, some places are using those LED strip lights on their windows, which by our, is probably not kosher, you know, we, we should nip it in the bud, but as far as something like what we're seeing proposed to us tonight, I don't know of anything that's really comparable.
Do they do it at Firelight?
No, they have more standard.
Or at the Connecticut Orthopedics Building?
No, it's just, their lights on the building are pulled down straight down, not a band around a building, you know.
That's what I'm asking.
Even with a cutoff.
Yeah, I, I don't think we have something comparable to, like, it being part of the architectural element, you know?
The only place I could think of that had that sort of accent lighting was a, I wanna say it was a Japanese restaurant out towards, on the way to, uh, now, what did we used to call that? Hitchcock Plaza. On the same side as Hitchcock Plaza, Hanyama.
Oh, the Hibachi place, the old?
Hana.
I, I don't remember, I'm just thinking of it.
Yeah, but, no, is the, I don't think there's a lot of it.
All right. Anything else? I mean, listen, I'd, I'd rather see a project that upgrades the entire property, but that's not what, what's before us, so, I mean, I don't know that we, you know, I mean, I, I think that the applicant has submitted an application.
It's an upgrade.
Yeah, well, not only that, but it complies with our regulations.
Hundred percent.
And, uh, for that reason, I, I, I would, you know, I would, I would vote in favor of it, you know, I mean, it doesn't, could it, could it be a better project? I guess so, but, um, you know, we take the applications we get.
The only way The only way that this would improve, like, to the parameters that you're talking about, is an upgrade of the entire center.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's, that's, you know.
And it's not happening here, and who knows when it might happen?
Yeah.
Although, you know, as, as we've seen, you know, patience brings us some, has brought us some good projects over, over the years, so.
Well, and, and, you know, monetizing the corner instead of having a vacant building
Yeah.
gives the landlord a little more financial room to perhaps do some upgrades also.
Fill some potholes, maybe.
Right, yeah, that would be good. All right, and, uh, you know, also, I, I, you know, looked at 383-131, which are all the, you know, standards for, um, thirty-one, which are all the, you know, standards for, for site plan approval, and, you know, I, uh, this is, you know, it says that in one thirty-two, permitted uses in their respective, subject to the satisfaction of the requirements and standards of this section, special uses that may be permitted in a district are uses that under favorable circumstances will be appropriate, harmonious, and desirable uses in the district, but that possess such special characteristics that each should, each use should be considered as an individual case. You know, I, I think the applicant has submitted everything, you know, all the paperwork, all the applications that are required in support of the special permit, and then the general considerations, the size and intensity, the proposed use, and the size of the lot on which it is to be located, again, not perfect, but not, I, I don't think objectionable. The capacity of adjacent and feeder streets to accommodate peak traffic loads, and any traffic hazards that may be created by the use. I think we've addressed that, and we're probably comfortable that that, that we're okay there. The effect upon property values and appearance in the neighborhood, I don't know that we have any evidence in the record on, on that, or at least nothing negative. Fire employees' protection needs, well, we've considered that. And then, under three eighty-three, one thirty-seven, other general standards, act, A is access. Provision shall be made for vehicle or access to the lot in such a manner as to avoid undue hazards to traffic and undue traffic congestion on any street. I think that was a big part of this application, and we've, we've looked at that, and, and neighborhood, the site plan and architectural plan shall be of a character as to harmonize with the neighborhood, to accomplish a transit, a transition in character between areas of unlike character, to protect property values, et cetera. So I don't know, I, I think under our, our standards for special use permit approval, I think the applicant has probably carried the day on those questions. I mean, that's all I have on it. I, I would, I would like to see the parking spaces identified on the, as a condition. Yeah, I mean, if, assuming we approve, I think that can be a condition. I don't know that we need to see it again. It could be something Jack signs off on.
Yeah, I think if, if we want, I have a couple things written down here that, you know, one being that all green areas and landscaped areas are irrigated with sprinklers. The blue LED light will be the shielded version as provided to us tonight, and a plan with the full.
You said blue?
The, I should say, the LED light.
Any, yeah.
The LED light is the shielded version that was, you know, given to us tonight. And then a plan showing the full parking areas on the property be submitted to me as well.
Yeah, I mean, there should, I guess there should be some detail on the plan regarding that LED, regarding that lighting, right?
Right, so on their, I think it was on their archit materials, we could ask for a revised copy of the archit materials reflecting this change. Yeah.
All right, I think that would, would cover it. All right, as I said, that's all I have. Any, anybody else? Anything else? Okay, then, are we prepared to vote? Prepared for a motion?
Sure.
Please proceed.
All right, let's see if I can put it together here. So I'll move that we approve the application for special exception permit or use site plan, application submitted by DTV Orange LLC for the property known as one twelve Boston Post Road. Remove the existing subway building and construct a dual lane drive-through service coffee stand with car hop service with the, under the following conditions. Number one, that revised plan, site plan, I guess it is, that be submitted showing the hundred and sixty-four spaces. Also on that plan should show the sprink, sprinkler you indicate?
Correct. All, all landscaped areas be serviced by sprinkler system.
I'll incorporate that as well on the lighting plan.
And as well as a revision to the archit materials showing the shielded LED accent.
That all LEDs should be shielded, that the light source should be shielded. And I'll incorporate that as well.
To ensure compliance.
To ensure compliance with the three eighty-three, what is it?
Three eighty-three ninety C.
C. And also that we've certainly discussed all the special considerations for the, I'm sorry, considerations for the special permit, and those are the, the reasons for the approval.
All right. I would add one thing. The, the motion to approve is as to both a special permit and the site plan.
That's a good, good note, yep.
Because, and the site plan approval, that includes the, the landscaping.
Absolutely.
The lighting and all of that. Any signage, any signage the applicant needs to?
Signage will be permitted at a later date through my office.
All right. All right, so we have a motion to approve. Somebody want to second it?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. All right, good.
Go make coffee.
Welcome to Orange, welcome to Orange.
Your guy there did a very nice job.
Yeah.
He tried to tell the truth.
Absolutely.
Snuck out.
Thank you. Well, we'll be, I'll be in touch.
Good night. All right, last item on the agenda tonight is number six, to consider enacting regulations for smoke shops, tobacco stores, and/or vape shops. This is on our, on the commission's initiative, and it, this, this public hearing, it too is continued from, from our three, four, twenty-five meeting. You know, I, I guess we're at a, a decision point here, you know. I think, I mean, we don't have a specific amendment to the regulation before us to consider. But I, I guess, my, my sense is everybody's of a mind to amend the regulations in some fashion. And, you know, I think, I think we need to decide tonight if, if that's the case, you know, what, what direction are we going in? And, you know, I, I think close this public hearing, and then reopen a, a new public hearing when we have an actual draft regulation amendment to consider.
Correct, yeah. Yep, so if we decide what we want to do, we can close this public hearing. I think we should take a vote, even though we're, I know we're not looking at any language, but taking a vote that the zoning commission begin to draft language for a special permit or to prohibit these establishments entirely. So there, there still would be a vote.
Or anything else anybody could do.
Or, yeah, or, you know, any other option.
Between, right.
Right, but I mean, we should definitely have a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah.
And then, you know, a, a motion along the lines you described, so. I don't know.
So I've been kind of going back and forth, because I usually, as usual, I start at, it's a legal activity, you know, I, you know, what, what impact is us prohibiting or allowing this happen, gonna have, ba, ba, ba. But the more I looked at it and, you know, went into a place and wandered around, you know, I, I really think it falls under the category of things that while it may be legal, I don't particularly think we need it here.
Right.
Okay?
Or we have plenty of it.
And, and to the extent that we do, we have plenty, and.
I made that list of the existing.
You know, but, you know, but as a use that an entire store is, you know, or a substantial portion of a store is devoted to, you know, I, I, I'm leaning more towards just prohibiting that as a use and letting the existing ones go out over time, personally.
Couldn't have said it better than myself, Kevin.
Yep. I don't, I don't see that they're an asset to our community. We've got great information by experts in the public record of the dangers, or potential dangers, that, you know, yes, it's regulated and yes, it's legal, but they can't say that everybody going in is of age, so.
Nobody showed up in support.
Nobody showed up in support.
And we can't do anything about anybody else, but we can certainly take care of us. You know what I mean? We can't stop Milford or West Haven or anything like that.
Milford stopped it.
Yeah.
And for what it's worth, I did run this by the first electman today, just to let him know that we were most likely gonna be voting, because he was the one that first referred it to us. He was also leaning towards the side of prohibition when I was picking this.
Yeah, his memo to us talked about regulating. I don't know if regulating was the word he used, but it, but it wasn't prohibiting. So that's why I was, I, you know, interested to know.
I believe you are right. If I don't have one in here, I have it on my computer. But I, yeah, long story short, you're, that's, that's exactly right.
Right. But, you know.
Because we're doing our job.
Right.
Thank you very much for your idea.
No.
But I'll take care of it.
But, you know, we have, we have evidence in the record now, you know, indicating that it's a real problem. And I, I feel comfortable saying that it goes to the health, safety, welfare that we're charged with preserving. So I would, I would favor what Kevin suggests. If everybody's of the same mind, or I would suggest, well, first, let me ask, all right, the person in the audience, would you like to speak on the application?
Yes.
Okay. You're gonna have to introduce yourself again.
Catherine Williams, five fifteen Dogwood Road in Orange, Connecticut. I just wanted, as a member of the public, to state that, that I too am in agreement with the idea of either severely regulating or, or prohibiting these types of shops. I don't think they add to the character of the community. I think that one of the things that, that this body and whatever the committees in the town need to do is figure out a way to upgrade many of the businesses on the Post Road. And so I don't think that this would, would do anything to upgrade that.
Right. Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then, if we have nothing else, then somebody prepare to make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Some moved?
All right.
Seconded.
It's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. So then, if we're, if we're in agreement that we would, you know, favor prohibiting in, prohibiting this type of use in all districts, all zoning districts in the town, then what we should do, I think, is direct town attorney to draft a regulation.
I'd let him know today that we were most likely gonna be calling his line.
Yeah, now, in looking at some of the other, like, blueprints, so to speak, from things, I think that, and Jack had said this at a prior meeting, you know, you're gonna have to define what it is that you're prohibiting. And then, so, and I think that the model.
Milford did a pretty good chance, a pretty good job of that.
I think that the.
So I think town attorney's got something to work with.
I spoke with him very briefly today that if, if it were to move in that direction, and he was of the same opinion. He said, well, Milford seemed to have a pretty, pretty bang-up job, so.
Yeah, as a percentage of the floor area thing, I think, made a ton of sense.
Yeah.
It's hard to differentiate that from a convenience store.
We'll get plenty of time to, to look over that regulation when, once it's drafted, and we decide at some point to send it to another public hearing where we can.
Yep.
Adopt.
Revive, you know, refine it and hopefully approve it. But in the meantime, again, we have the benefit of the moratorium, so we're not going to.
We're not gonna, we won't dilly-dally on it, but we, we're certainly not under the gun.
Right, okay. So then, we should have a motion?
Yeah, I think because we had a public hearing, we closed it, we should probably make a vote just to say, you know, the, the board decides to move towards prohibiting these establishments, and we'll begin drafting language to do so. Say it just like that.
I mean, somebody else could make a motion besides Paul.
Yeah.
All right, so I guess what I would like to do is approve a, a prohibition on, all right, I'm lost here. To have the town attorney draft a regulation, amending the Orange zoning regulations to reg, to prohibit future smoke shops, tobacco shops, and/or vape shots, vape shops. That's inclusive, not, not without, that's without limitation. That's it.
Yeah, and that, and that, that draft regulation, we'd consider it a future public hearing, and with a view toward prohibiting that type of use in the town of Orange, in all zoning districts.
I'll, I'll incorporate that into the motion.
All right. Do we have a second? It's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. We need one more motion tonight.
Move to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
It's been seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Okay, very good. Thank you, everybody.